Your life, Chair.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members, members of the public, guests, officers, staff. Thank you very much for coming to this meeting of the County Council, Monmouthshire County Council, Thursday 16th of December. The meeting is being held remotely due to Covid, of course, and we shall progress the agenda as we usually do. So number one on the agenda is apologies for absences.
Yes, Chair, apologies, Chair.
Go on.
Yes, Chair, we've had apologies from councillors David Evans, councillor Blakber and Ruth Edwards.
Brilliant.
Chair.
Richard, please.
Dimitri, I think Jim hasn't joined us, so I'll put Jim Higginson as well while he hasn't joined us.
Okay, thank you. Were there any other apologies?
Yes, Chairman, councillor Taylor has just been held up. She will be joining the meeting as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, sorry, I can't get a hand signal. Could I just give apologies for councillor Peter Clark, please?
Thank you very much.
And councillor Linda Guppy sends her apologies. She's been called in as part of the NHS workers who are having to step up to the vaccination programme at the moment. Thank you.
Brilliant, thank you very much. Anyone else? If not, Richard, I hope you noted all those for us.
Sorry, Chair, I do have some. Councillor Lisa Dimmock and councillor Brian Jones. And it was councillor Edward mentioned. Oh, sorry, councillor Dimmock.
I am on, I'm going to be on till about three o'clock and then I need to go.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, councillor Woodhouse. Okay, members, we'll move on then to item number two, declarations of interest. I'm happy to take that as and when.
Chair, I just did note in the chat field.
Sorry, yes, so it is, which I'll come on to number four, Tony, that's okay. Okay, thank you. So any declarations of interest for anyone? No public questions? I believe we've had any public questions. Now, we move on to number four, chairman's announcements and receipt of petitions. We haven't had any petitions, but I would like to unfortunately announce that one of our former members, Andrew James, has passed away just very recently, and so we send his family our sincere regards and best wishes at this moment in time. So thank you very much all. Number five is cabinet statement on the impact of Covid-19 on schools in Monmouthshire. This is for you, Paul Pavia. Thank you, Paul.
Yeah, thanks, Chair. Good afternoon, members. As we reached the end of the autumn term, I thought it was an opportune point for me to provide you with an update about the impact of Covid in schools this term and how our schools have responded to the significant challenges that they have faced. I would like to share with you the extent to which Covid has impacted upon our learners and the staff that work with them, but also highlight the continued work that schools have undertaken to support learners and their wellbeing. However, before I set out some of that detail from this last term, I just want to start by paying thanks to our learners, to their families and all the staff across all our schools. Their efforts have been truly remarkable. Across Monmouthshire's schools, there have been 1,769 positive Covid cases between the 3rd of September and the 12th of December. This represents 16% of the school age population. There have been 805 cases in secondary schools and 964 cases in our primary schools. And the age range most affected was those learners between the ages of 11, sorry, between eight and 11, which accounted for 42% of all our cases. We saw a slow start to cases in Monmouthshire before a spike around the half turn mark. And there was then at that time a clear shift in cases moving from the secondary school sector to our primary schools. And that has been significantly, significantly higher in the latter part of the term. And this shift could be attributable to the introduction of vaccines to those aged between 12 and 15 from the 4th of October. But we haven't got the clear data to underpin that. Nearly Covid has not only impacted our learners, but there has been a clear impact on our school staff. Schools have reported the highest levels of staff cases and related absences of Covid across Monmouthshire County Council. It has had a tangible and direct impact on teaching delivery this term, and the changes around household isolation requirements has exacerbated the situation where staff were waiting for PCR tests and their results, and also those members of staff who've had childcare responsibilities as well. The impact of Covid on Monmouthshire schools has been more significant in the autumn term compared to any previous term throughout the pandemic. Critically, at the same time, there has been a shortage of supply staff to fill those gaps in our staffing capacity, placing additional pressure on our school staffing teams. Yet despite this, nearly all our schools have remained open throughout the term, with only two instances of primary schools having to close a class for a very limited period of time. Currently, due to the extreme staff shortages, one of our secondary schools has moved to remote learning for post-16 learners for this last week of term to allow face-to-face delivery for those in years seven to 11. Since the start of the pandemic, there has been a relentless focus on the wellbeing of our learners and staff across our schools. This term has not seen any change in this approach. Schools have been able to use some of the new grant streams to support enhanced and developing wellbeing provision within their schools. Achieving a sustainable balance between wellbeing and structured learning will be a challenge in the short, medium and longer term. The pandemic and the disruption it inevitably has caused to teaching and learning has impacted on the progress of our learners. This term, officers working with our partners in the Educational Achievement Service have increased their interaction with schools to understand where learners are and identify specific areas of support that schools may need to enhance their provision and their offer. A series of professional discussions have taken place with 18 of our schools during the term, and that is the highest proportion across the region. And the purpose of these meetings is to gain a deeper understanding of our schools, where they currently are, what their priorities are and what they plan to do to address them, and what support they need from us and the AS to move forward. Feedback from these head teachers discussions have been very, very positive, and certainly positive looking at the new processes that will have to be implemented in the new year. And they have appreciated the opportunity to have a purposeful discussion about their school to develop a collective understanding of the challenges they have faced and their achievements. Over the course of the year, we will meet with all of our schools, and we've got 13 planned for the spring term and new year and the remainder for the first half of the summer term. New processes to support schools in need of higher levels of support have been established and implemented during the autumn term using a team around the school approach. And currently, there are no Monmouthshire schools receiving the highest levels of support. At this stage, the plans for next summer's examination series remain as a return to formal examinations. And there are alternative plans in place should they not be able to proceed. But at this stage, those decisions are with other parties and other agencies beyond this authority. So that's with Qualifications Wales, Public Health Wales and the Welsh Government. But we will work closely with our secondary schools to support them if changes are necessary. All schools have continued their work preparing for the implementation of the Additional Learning Needs and Educational Tribunal Wales Act from January 2022. And this has been ably supported by the team in Monmouthshire and the wider regional ALN implementation team. And officers continue to work with the Welsh Government to ensure a smooth and appropriately phased implementation of these changes. For those of you who are governors, I would suggest that you make sure that you are aware of these new changes because they will be fundamentally different to the current arrangements with more responsibility resting with individual schools. Alongside all of these activities and the difficult operational aspects, schools have continued to develop their thinking and approaches to the new curriculum, the Curriculum for Wales. This is a significant change to the current curriculum delivery, seeing each school design and create its own curriculum, responding to their own local context. The September 2022 introduction should be seen as the beginning of a process rather than as a big bang launch. The Educational Achievement Service are providing tailored professional learning to support our schools. The AS has rationalised the professional learning offer to schools in recognition of the challenges the schools are facing this term, and that's obviously understandable. But there remains a wide range of professional learning opportunities, and most can be accessed on demand to ensure greater equity for all. ESTIN have announced that inspections will recommence in the spring term, and schools identified by ESTIN for inspection will be notified at the start of the spring term with the current three-week notice period that will be maintained and in place. We expect to see ESTIN visit some Monmouthshire schools on the list as several have not been visited for several years now. I know my own school, St Mary's, its last inspection was in 2013. As we turn to the Christmas holidays, the thoughts shift immediately to the return in January. This morning, we had various information from the Welsh Government and we had a letter distributed from the minister. And he has identified that the first two days of the spring term will be designated as additional planning days. This will allow a maturity of data and intelligence about the Omicron variants to be considered and contingency plans to be put in place for the return of children. There, of course, remains a risk that the start of term could see a return to remote learning, but we will have to be informed about that as and when that occurs. Welsh Government will be meeting more frequently over the next few months, and potentially there could be further updates during the Christmas holiday period. However, if this is the case and we do have to move to the remote learning, I am very confident that the blended learning offer that has been developed and refined over the last 20 months in our schools will allow our pupils to continue to learn in the least disruptive way as possible. I hope members have found this update helpful. I will be happy to take questions that you may have. But I would like to conclude what I started by thanking all of our schools, the learners and all our families for their efforts during this term, and I wish them a really restful Christmas. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Pavia. And so members will open up for questions as councillor Pavia just suggested. I will remind members that we'll only allow them to ask one, to speak once, and there won't be any supplementary questions, okay? So councillor Tudor Thomas.
Okay, thank you, Chair, and thank you, cabinet member Paul Pavia, for that fairly comprehensive update. And as Chair of CYP, the scrutiny committee, I would add to your thanks to all schools, all members of staff, whether it be head teachers, teachers, cleaners, caretakers, et cetera, everybody who's actually worked so hard this term to keep things going. I'm governor of West Kilmeragh, I govern here, I can see, you know, what has been done there. Key question or area that I'm interested in is, you know, has AS yet or do they intend trying to evaluate the impact on the examination classes in key stage four and at sixth form level? Because obviously the disruption has been uneven, it's erratic. And certainly, you know, my understanding is that, as you stated, exams will go back, as it were, to normal, but also that exam boards will be moving, as it were, the percentages at each particular grade. They will be trying to bring them back more in line with what they actually were prior to Covid. Because if you look at the percentages in the last two years, they have rocketed. And obviously, I assume the assessment authority, you know, can't allow that to continue. And I agree with that, but on the other hand, I think the sort of an impact assessment is important. So I just raised that issue. Thanks very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pavia.
Yeah, thanks councillor Thomas. The minister today has asked schools as part of their contingency planning in those first two days of the new term to ensure that exam years are prioritised for onsite provision. And should they need to restrict in-person learning at any time, that those plans are firmly in place. And I think in terms of revisiting those plans, they've been asked to consider what arrangements might be needed in place for particularly for vulnerable learners and children of critical workers during any periods of disruption. And you're absolutely right in terms of what qualifications Wales are looking at in terms of trying to roll back some of the grade inflation. That is obviously understandable. We should have a better understanding of where we are going to be in the summer term. Examinations probably end in January, early February. Qualifications Wales are working on the premise that examinations will go ahead as normal this current year, but they will be guided by Public Health Wales really in terms of, you know, whether or not they can continue. In terms of AS and their assessment work, I'm not fully aware whether or not they are going to do that piece and when that piece is going to come. I'm sure they will do that piece. I might just bring in the chief officer to see if he's got any further information on the AS assessments of examination grades. But if you've got anything further to add.
Thanks councillor Pavia. Good afternoon, members. Will McLean, Chief Officer for Children and Young People. In response to councillor Thomas's question, the work that is done by the AS, working with colleagues in the local authority, is to ensure that the provision in schools, the standard of teaching and learning is as high as it can be. As councillor Thomas will know, the relationship between the school as the centre and the examination board is a relationship purely between those two institutions and not one that the local authority or the AS has a part in. Our focus has been clearly on making sure that learners are as prepared as they can be for their return to formal examinations. Many schools have been looking at providing, you know, mock experiences and so on. I think it's really important to remember for our year 13 learners, this is the first time they'll have sat a formal examination if they do go ahead next summer, because obviously they didn't go through their GCSEs in year 11, two years ago. So this is going to be a really important time, but we are working closely with our school improvement partners and our secondary schools to make sure that those steps to prepare our learners as well as we can are in place. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Will. Okay, councillor Tony Easton.
Thank you, Chair, thank you. I'd like to express the support to Dewstow School and Ascot Grumaygrifin on the way they've operated the last number of months. Both schools have been under pressure, particularly Dewstow, where they haven't had a head teacher. We've now got an appointment coming forward. So I give my support to the governors and the school schools, and I hope that support carries on. And also, I'm not asking for a major comment, but I think it's important that this council had the school on the basis of the incident this week, and I think that our members, we should express an appropriate appropriate comment or whatever you want to them, and perhaps councillor Pavia could comment on that.
Thank you, councillor Pavia.
Yes, thanks councillor Easton. Yeah, you're absolutely right. Our immediate thoughts with the young students who was involved in this incident and the family, as well as those in school and the wider community. We have been working very closely with the school, the Codacop School, and her previous primary school as well to provide support to peers and staff who have understandably been affected by Monday's events. But given the ongoing nature of the work by a range of agencies, there is nothing further I'm able to share at this time with members. And I know that might be frustrating. I know local members have been updated where possible at the start of the week around the incident. But given, you know, there are two significant inquiries now open, we can't say anything further at this stage.
I appreciate that, Paul, but could the council, as members today, support, give our support formally on record, please?
I believe that's just been done. Thank you councillor Pavia. Thank you councillor Easton. Councillor Armin Watts, please.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. My question is related to Covid, Paul, if I may. It's about the ventilation in schools. So where we've seen the spread of the virus in schools, there is a kind of, from my understanding, there is a, not exclusively, but a connection where schools, not just in Monmouthshire but across, where they are particularly poorly ventilated. Some of the schools, obviously, we have in the authority are brand new and excellent and are stated, they have excellent ventilation. Others, for example, like Chepstow, have relatively poor ventilation because of the aged building. So I'm sure you can guess where this conversation is going to go, but have you really thought any more or looked at it any closer about speeding up your plans, if they do really exist, about, I know there's been some discussion in CYP about this, about rebuilding Chepstow comprehensive, and if so, when will that be? Will we have to wait for a conservative manifesto to get the announcement? My second question is, it relates to then the progress of children with, that have obtained special status in the authority. Now, from my understanding, according to Lisa, the authority were surprised by the amount of children that have special status. And obviously, they, some of those children, but not all, will require some special assistance around legal support, maybe, if they've not been properly, I know I'm going into the grey area here about special status, but with their families as well, whether or not there's any kind of discrepancies about unsettling those children because they may not have full special status. But also then, from an educational perspective, what additional, are you aware of any additional support besides language assistance for those children who are new that we've rolled out as a response to the amount of children, which is relatively high compared to other local authorities for, you know, a rural authority? Have we got any evidence where we've done anything different? Or are we trying to assist? If so, what are those things that we are doing? Thank you.
Councillor Pavia.
Yes, thanks councillor Watts. Yeah, in terms of the ventilation of our schools, you're absolutely right. And it's going to be critically important during the next term. I think we've recognised that this has been a challenging term, particularly the latter end of this term. But I think next term, with the rapid spread of Omicron potentially, is going to be even more challenging. You know, we've had a notification today from the Welsh Government that we're potentially moving to a very high status in terms of the local decision-making framework. And, you know, there'll be a number of risk mitigation interventions that'll have to be brought in as part of that higher level status, which will mean, you know, regular testing for pupils and staff, mask wearing in both classrooms and communal areas, staggered days as well. All those things will be implemented. You're absolutely right in terms of ventilation is really, really important. We've provided circa 400 CO2 monitors to our schools and really want to thank Welsh Government for investing in those pieces of kit, and they're going to be very important, certainly in the winter months. And, you know, in terms of the impact of those, those pieces of kit already, you know, we've had feedback from our schools that they are proving really effective as a tool to manage airflow in classrooms. In terms of Chepstow School itself, and, you know, you will be aware that we've invested money over the, particularly over this last few months, renovating certain aged aspects of the school, particularly the windows in and around, in and around the school, obviously going to be a really important measure. In terms of the delivery of Chepstow School, that hasn't changed. We're still working on refurbishing and rebuilding all our schools. Unfortunately, Chepstow is going to be the last of our schools. In terms of, you know, that Bancy window, it's not going to open until 2024. But having Tim Bird come in from Monmouthshire, obviously retired from Monmouthshire School, but coming to work for us as our educational advisor, he was really instrumental in developing Monmouthshire School. And he will be working with the school in terms of ensuring we get that business case in line ready as soon as that gateway opens. In terms of your second question, children with special status, given the operational element there, I might bring the chief officer in just to answer that, if that's okay. Well.
Thanks again councillor Pavia. I think I'll have to come back to councillor Watts with some of that detail from colleagues who are working on that, and I'll look to do that as soon as we can.
Thank you, Will. Okay, thank you very much. Thank you councillor Pavia. Councillor Martin Grocott, please.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you for that detailed statement, county councillor Pavia was very welcome. I've got one very brief question, really. Several Welsh local authorities, particularly in the north of the country, had taken a decision to close their schools early and go over to remote learning because of what seems to be an exponential growth in the new variant. I'd just like to know if we considered doing that or whether we just are letting our children go to the end of term and hoping that they don't catch Covid.
You, councillor Pavia.
Yeah, thanks councillor Grocott for your question. I mean, in terms of the changes we did have to implement, as I said in the statement, Chepstow School, their sixth form provision had to go online because the impact on staff who were either isolating or had contracted Covid meant that we couldn't deliver the full sixth form provision as well as the secondary school provision for the other years from seven to 11. So that's the only change we did. In terms of the, because we work obviously on a regional approach, the Gwent Incident Management Team did raise the status of the region just before the October half term to high. At that point, there was obviously a number of authorities within the region really suffering from the effects of the Delta variant, and it was understandable that a number of directors felt that they needed to move to that level of provision where additional interventions were going to be introduced. At that stage, we weren't, we weren't there in terms of our levels of transmissibility within the local authority. We didn't have to make that provision, but we obviously had the ability to fall back on that if we needed to. I have to say, in some schools, we've probably just got there by the skin of our teeth in terms of moving to the end of term, which is obviously tomorrow. But some of those North Wales local authorities, they didn't finish, or they don't finish school until the 22nd. So having that additional few days into next week was probably one of the reasons, so sort of make or break really in terms of impacting the Christmas holidays, as well as obviously the impact on staff. And that's the, that's the critical area for all our schools and all our authorities is the staff, you know. We, if we haven't got the staff there because they're, you know, they've either contracted Covid or have to isolate or they have care and responsibilities, then it proves really difficult. Absolutely. But as I said in the statement, I think if we do have to move to a blended learning offer in the new year, which could happen, and as you said, this is a fast-moving piece. And we could have an update from Welsh Government during the, during the Christmas holidays. But if we do have to move that to that blended learning offer, I'm really assured that the offer that we have developed and we have refined over the past 20 months is a really good offer, is a strong offer. And it'll certainly be the least disruptive move if that's, you know, if that's what happens. But, you know, we'll just have to see, you know, the, obviously, the rising cases of Omicron is really concerning. And, you know, I would understand the Welsh Government taking a precautionary approach from January, but it's obviously it's a moving piece, so it's something we'll just have to wait for further information on.
Paul, thank you very much for bringing your report to the council. Will, thank you very much for your time and thanks sincerely to your team as well for doing everything you're doing at this moment in time, because it is difficult. Members, thank you for your questions. We'll move on then to number six, which is motions for council. Six point one submitted by county councillor Tudor Thomas.
Tudor, this is yours. Yeah, thank you, Chair. Obviously, the motion is as stated there, but just to flesh it out a little bit. I visited the bus station with some other councillors, actually, a few, good few weeks ago, with the Pro Mobility Group, the group of people who have mobility issues.
with the Pro Mobility Group, the group of people who have mobility issues. But I was just amazed that the current bus station provision is just not fit for purpose. It's just completely, you know, unuser-friendly. And that obviously discourages people from using the bus service. And that has an effect on things like CO2 emission and obviously a rain to take more passenger cars off the road. Unfortunately, you know, many people do not have access to a car. Or some people, yes, have access to a car, but they are no longer able or fit to drive. And they have to use the buses and the bus station. And they really struggle to use it. There are also other sections of the community, you know, people with young children in buggies, et cetera, and the public in general. I was amazed that we don't actually have a dropped curb to gain access to the bus station on foot. And on the day I visited, the members who were in mobility scooters had to go round a long way before they could find a drop curb to get back to the bus station. In this day and age, that is pretty appalling, I think. Because those people don't have a choice and they can't step up onto the curb and say, I might, or anybody else might. The other issue there is the bus shelters were replaced not so long ago. And basically, they're just not fit for purpose. And, you know, I hadn't, I'm not a great philosopher, but in my, in simplistic terms, a bus shelter should be there to shelter you from the elements. And currently, and certainly the mobility group were very vociferous about this. They just don't do that. If you stand in the two bus shelters that are there, you get wet and you were blown apart. And I, it just seems a nonsense that we've replaced bus shelters, which did actually shelter people from the elements. And now they're in a situation where they're open to the elements and they get soaking wet before they get onto a bus, or if they're going to travel on. Lastly, traffic control in there, it's almost non-existent. On the day that we were actually there, somebody flew in, in a passenger car at the no entry sign, screeched to a halt and then went to the cafe. We should have some physical plates on the road to stop cars doing that. That obviously puts people at risk. I really feel strongly for the people who have no choices. You know, if you have a car, you can choose. Do I go on the bus? Do I go in my car? If you haven't got a car or you've had to revoke your licence, you don't have that choice. So I just make a really genuine plea, and it's not a huge political issue today. It's just practicality and out of care for everybody in our community. So I make a genuine plea that the bus station is totally updated and that bus users then can actually get to the bus station, they can shelter effectively and they can get, get on the bus. And the very final point, timetables, they're in the wrong font size, you can't read them. If you're a wheelchair user, they're at about six foot or seven foot height, where you can't really look at them. So I honestly think we need to do something about the bus station for those people who have to use it. Okay, thanks very much.
Thank you very much, councillor Thomas. Do you have a second of your motion?
Yes, I'd like to second that, Chair, if I may.
Thank you very much, councillor Grochuck, seconded. Thank you very much. And then we'll go on to members who expressed a wish to speak. Councillor Jane Pratt, please.
Thank you very much, Chairman, and can I thank councillor Thomas for submitting this motion? I would like to update council on works already planned in this financial year and works intended for Aberguvenny Bus Station before the 31st of March 2022, weather permitting, have already been planned in this financial year following a successful bid to improve bus facilities from Welsh Government in this financial year, which were received back in April 2021. At Aberguvenny, on Stand One, the platform is to be increased in size to allow a larger new shelter to be installed. Information boards and tactile paving is to be installed as well. On Stand Two, that is going to be removed completely to allow flow of traffic through the bus station. And all drop curbs to platforms will have tactile paving and will be clearly marked between the platforms. As far as the stand that, the bus shelter that councillor Thomas referred to, we had to follow when that was installed Covid guidance at the time. And that did not allow us to put a front on the bus shelter. As soon as that guidance allows us to do so, we will obviously make sure that we, that we do install a bus shelter that will provide better coverage. The island at the end of Stand Five is to be removed to provide better access to the stand, but keeping the taxi parking and pavement. And Bays Two and Three of the coach parking are to be hatched out with no parking to ensure access for buses is maintained. Signage is to be provided at the no entry and the bus station entrance, clearly marked with allowed vehicles. And signage at the rear of the coach parking bays to state parking conditions and which vehicles are allowed and between what times. There are to be dedicated motorcycle parking bays outside the cafe area. And the lining is to be reinstated, clearly marking bays and no entry areas. This work is planned to be carried out and completed with funds we receive to be used in this financial year, which addresses the points made by councillor Thomas. However, we have an additional proposal to carry out a Welltag One study of the whole bus station area to look at the longer-term ambition of providing a new transport hub in this area that will be sustainable for the future. This motion cannot be supported because all the points made by councillor Thomas are works planned for this year. And this council received Welsh Government funding to improve Aberguvenny Bus Station last April with the work scheduled to be carried out this financial year. I am surprised that councillor Thomas has brought this motion as he has attended meetings with officers recently in his ward when these plans have been discussed and he is fully aware of these plans, as are all Aberguvenny town councillors. In addition to this, I also, as cabinet member, have regular meetings with the Pro Mobility Group. I have a good working relationship with them. And I have attended meetings with them recently, along with councillor Thomas. This Conservative administration has invested heavily in Aberguvenny Town and it is now a vibrant, busy centre. Once this year's work is completed, we will proceed with plans to create a sustainable transport hub at Aberguvenny Bus Station by applying for funding to carry out a Welltag One study. Our total commitment to our climate change agenda is to encourage the use of public transport and create active travel routes and hubs across the county, including at Aberguvenny, that will reduce the carbon footprint of this county whilst encouraging a healthier lifestyle for our residents. I hope councillor Thomas will consider withdrawing this motion. If not, I would advise members not to support it for the reasons I have given, which is for works already planned and for which Welsh Government funds have already been received. Thank you very much, Chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor Pratt. Councillor Maureen Powell, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Thomas, I'm very puzzled about this because surely you would have known, as well as the rest of us, that this work had been scheduled and the only thing holding it up has been Covid and the time. But it is scheduled to be done and the money has been raised from the Welsh Government. Why bring a motion about something which has already been decided and has already been passed by this Conservative council? It seems as though you're just making mischief in a way, because you've had more meetings about it than I have. So you should know far more than I do and I know what's going on. So why don't you? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Giles Howard, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Fikins Matt, afternoon all. Yeah, I think I just concur with the comments made by the members who spoke before. I mean, I certainly was aware that there was a working group meeting that I attended prior to the Welltag Study to look at transport issues in a hub and active travel in and around the Aberguvenny area. But I think the, this, the motion that it stands now is certainly unnecessary. But in any event, I don't think it goes wide enough, because we also need to think about the journeys that start and finish from outside of the bus centre where the, often in many cases, no facilities whatsoever. So, I mean, I'm not going to support it because it's unnecessary and it needs to take a bit of a wider scope. But other than that, I do thank Jane for her comments. And I know certainly for the public transport users in my ward, the improvements will be very much appreciated. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Giles. Now councillor Roger Harris, please.
Thank you, Chair. I certainly put my hand up twice. I'm a town councillor. I wasn't aware of all of these changes put out in great detail by councillor Pratt. I must admit, but maybe that's my, that's my fault. So we're having an argument now about how fantastic the Welsh Government is putting money up for transforming the station in the, in the town. We're arguing about nitty-gritty rather than saying, thank you very much for the Welsh Government, that the administration in County Hall seems to do its best to knock down every possible opportunity. So, good news, we're all pleased about it, we might be. So whether or not we need to go to the measures of not supporting the motion seems to be pretty pointless as far as I'm concerned. If the motion was put up in good faith, which I'm sure it was, then it should be supported, simple as that. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Harris. Councillor Sheila Woodhouse, please.
Yeah, hello. Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I'm also very confused by this motion because councillor Thomas, councillor Pratt, myself, we've attended meetings with, with the Pro Mobility Group and we've all, yeah, we all share concerns about the bus station. But we're all very pleased to know that work is being commissioned. And I've been following this closely and very, very delighted to hear Jane confirm again. I've seen email exchanges about some of the issues down there and know that it's all been worked on and our offices have been working hard. We've got the money for it. The best shelters, yes, it's unfortunate that there's no, they're not enclosed. But as the cabinet member pointed out, that's due to the Covid issues. I just wish we could do something quicker, you know, and cover them in. But it's work in hand, it's all been planned. So it's a bit like going back in time, we just want to get on with it now. And I am really confused. I know councillor Thomas means, you know, it is desperate, like we are, to get this work carried out as quickly as possible. But to bring a motion for something that's already planned just seems a little bit strange. So I just wanted to say thank you to councillor Pratt for all she's done to bring this. And the officers have worked on this and the sooner we can get it done, the better. But as I say, you know, I know you mean well, councillor Thomas, and we've been in meetings, you know, all together discussing this many times. And we all want this work to be carried out, is what I'm saying. And I just find it a little bit strange. It's come to full cancel. It's a bit like we're going back in the past a bit here. We just want to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Woodhouse. Thank you. Councillor Val Smith, please.
Just an observation, Chairman. That site has got huge potential. It's the access into Aberguvenny. We could do so much good there. So, okay, you're looking at issues now, but to me, yes, okay, Jane, that's great that things are going to be done. Years ago, I recall free shelters being offered and they were turned down by the council because they would have incorporated advertisements. But no, I would welcome, well, I welcome the talk of a whole site provision whereby we look at the toilets. And is the old TIC blocks still empty? Because it must be 10, 12 years. And that seems to me incredible if it is still empty. I haven't been to Aberguvenny for a little while. So, yeah, I welcome the potential of an entire site review. When you can look at the condition of your toilets and is this an up-to-date provision? You can also look at that empty building if it is and what it actually has been costing us over the 10, 12 years or more that it's stood empty. To see something done would be wonderful. The location of the hydrogen fuel, that struck me as a bit odd, but still, that's looking to the future. So an observation, you've got a wonderful, or we in Monmouthshire have got a wonderful site that should long ago have been developed and the whole provision needs looking at. Trifle perturbed with the detail, I hope the detailed analysis has gone into this, Jane, is appropriate and combined well with anything that comes out of your proposed review in the future. So, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, folks.
Thank you very much, councillor Smith. Councillor Simon Howarth, please.
Thank you, Chairman, and a good afternoon. Yeah, so it is a bit strange. Councillor Thomas has put the motion before council. But then there are the aspects of perhaps councillor Thomas doesn't trust the council on the basis of delivering, maybe that. There are a lot of strong feelings out there about things not being delivered by this council. How long we hide behind Covid, I'm not too sure. So the example councillor Thomas has given, an application was put in April for funds this year. Surely the application was built before April to put it in to get the funds. So you're right, councillor Thomas, we're talking well over 12 months now. We've been waiting for works on Aberguvenny Bus Station. And you are right and concerned that that hasn't been delivered. So have we been a bit slow going out to tender? Are we doing the work in-house ourselves? All them questions councillor Thomas, I believe, haven't been answered. Or you probably want to broke this motion. So I do get concerned. Value are right as well, the TIC in Aberguvenny, I've been asking now over two, three years, what we're doing with the TIC in Aberguvenny. That is a total disgrace that that building has sat empty there. The main link into the town is still sitting empty. So there's a lot of questions to be asked. Does councillor Thomas trust the council in delivering what it says? There are vibes out there that perhaps he doesn't and I'll concur with him. I think sometimes we are going a little bit too, too pro-election now. But let's see if it's delivered now before April. Thank you.
Thank you, Simon. Councillor Phil Murphy, please.
Thank you, Chair, and I can clear those two points up straight away. And the TIC building funding has been obtained and that's about to be occupied by Social Services and the Drug Rehabilitation Unit. And as regards the delays on getting the work done, that was difficulty in obtaining contractors to do the work. So everybody's been working very, very hard on this. It's all coming together, as is all of the work that councillor Pratt has pointed out. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Murphy. So no other members have expressed a wish to speak and so I'm happy to hand back to you councillor Tudor Thomas.
Okay. Before we go to the vote. Thanks. You know, I dislike the term that I'm being mischievous. You know, that is one thing that I certainly am not. And then certainly for people who know me in the town, I've lived in the town a long time. My interest is always for the town and for the people. And I'm not going to go back over all of those points, but I brought that motion. That bus station has been standing like that for seven years. Disabled people haven't been able to get in there for seven years because there is a wrap there. And that is appalling. And I stand by the motion. It might well be lost. I'm not too concerned, but I really wanted to bring this and air it. And that's what democracy is all about. It's not about not sharing concerns and issues. It's about sharing concerns and issues and so many people have raised that with me. So I feel perfectly happy in bringing it forward and obviously it's up to people now to vote for it. Hopefully, as councillor Pratt has outlined, that work will be done. But it really does need to be done. Thanks, Derek Bow.
Thank you very much, councillor Thomas. Thank you. So members, that has now been put into the chat bar to vote on. So if members would please turn to vote. Okay, so members, that has not been successful. So we shall move on to members' questions. At seven, seven point one, from county councillor Tudor Thomas to county councillor Penny Jones, cabinet member for social care, safeguarding and health. Tudor, are you happy to take that as written?
Yes, yeah, I take that as written. Can I say anything about it? I just wanted to make one or two brief points.
I'll allow that, yeah. I'll allow that, yeah.
Yeah, you know, very briefly, and this isn't mischievous and this isn't wasting time. The reason I brought this is obviously the terrible case of the young boy who were named there, Arthur, who died at the hands of his stepmother and his biological father. We've had a further case now last night of a 60 month old child in another authority. And this is not in any way critical of MCC and safeguarding. But personally, I speak as a parent, I'm a grandparent. I just think of my own kids and of my grandchildren. And I think, you know, I'm just tired nationally of that phrase, well, lessons will be learnt. Or there's a multidisciplinary approach when things fall down between the cracks. And I just really fear in that sense, when it says lessons will be learnt. I don't want a lesson to be learnt when a six year old child has died or a 60 month old child has died. And the other thing I would say very briefly is, I just I'm worried in listening today now to the cabinet member for CYP saying we might go back to blended learning, et cetera. When children are not in school, and that was part of the problem with the little boy in Solihull. You know, teachers do not then see the child. You know, if a child walks into your classroom, then you immediately know whether they're happy, unhappy, et cetera. If you're in a primary school, you might take them into a PE lesson. You know, they're in their PE kit or secondary, you see bruising, et cetera. You don't see that on a Zoom call, you don't see it on a phone call. And the same goes, I feel for social workers in the sense that how do you decide what how a household is running if you ring them, but you contact them by phone? Somebody could ring me today and say, oh, yeah, I'm fine. And then I could go and perhaps do something terrible to myself. People don't know, you know, they can't be seen. So I just raise it really to raise the awareness. And at the end of the day, everybody on this call today who's a county councillor is a corporate parent. So, you know, we hold quite a big responsibility. So that's the reason we're bringing the question. It's not mischievous, it's not misleading. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor Thomas. Councillor Penny Jones.
Thank you, Chair. No, I'd like to start by saying thank you to councillor Thomas for bringing this question so that we can address it. In light of the recent tragedies of both Arthur and Star, but all those unseen tragedies that we don't know about. So I'm very thankful to him. To start with, we can never say never when it comes to child protection and safeguarding. We cannot be complacent. We've talked about it many times. It, there is always more that can be done. And we can never come to an end to our work. Hopefully, that term that lessons will be learnt won't apply to us. Although, of course, you know, we will take keen notice of the inquiries and their findings. But hopefully, we are more prepared than that upfront. A lot of work across the council over several years has been done to ensure that safeguarded is embedded. And that's very important, as you say, councillor Thomas, we're all corporate parents. But it is embedded in the whole culture. And it's understood that it's everybody's responsibility. This was endorsed by the recent Whole Authority Safeguarding Report and then endorsed by the council. And this is supported by many training programmes that are in place, both for members and for the whole of Social Services. There is good liaison between the schools, children and young people and children's services. And this is supported by the Lead Officer for Safeguarding in Education and all the head teachers of all the schools in Mammashia. There is good liaison between all of them. And referral rates have remained high throughout the Covid period, which can be seen really as a positive in one respect in that they, people are bothering to still report their concerns. This is very important. And all referrals into children's services are screened and decisions made as to what should happen next. And these are made within 24 hours with initial discussions about safeguarding concerns being held via the multi agency process. Social workers who undertake home assessments to investigate concerns are properly trained, supervised and, most importantly, supported. There has seemed to be a lack of support in some of the cases we've read about. And this is one thing that Mammashia is very keen to uphold, the support for its staff within social services and within other areas, in fact. Families can access early help services so that they don't even get to that stage if they too have concerns within the community and with good liaison between early help services and children's services themselves. Part of the regional safeguarding arrangements, which helps us to ensure that any lessons or implications arising from regional and national reviews of child protection arrangements are considered at a local level. So it always comes down to a local level and then a regional level. We will be following any inquiries, as we've just talked about, arising from the current tragic cases concerning Arthur, Star and many others, with careful attention to take the opportunity to glean any additional learning and further development of services, arrangements or practice as seen fit. At this point, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Diane Corrister, who is the new head of children's services. Diane was a lead safeguarding officer. And her knowledge and expertise, particularly in children's services, can only be seen as a positive. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much, councillor Jones. Tudor, you have a supplementary question?
No, not really. I'm glad that I've brought that question. Yeah, I am in that sense reassured. But I really think this is something that we've got to keep, as it were, on the burner because of what has happened in two authorities, albeit in England. But we're not talking about minor issues. You're talking about the, you know, the life of a child, aren't you? And all of us here, whether you're a parent or not, it doesn't really matter, whatever job you do. No one wants to see a child being badly treated. And certainly, no one wants to see a child dying at the hands of anyone, let, you know, let alone a parent. And I do appreciate Covid has brought a huge challenge for all schools, social services, childcare, et cetera. So I really think we want to sort of home in on this. And I know we have in the past, but I really think we've got to keep it in sight. So I'm grateful to the cabinet member for her answer. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Tudor. Thank you very much, Penny, for your comprehensive answer as well. Thank you very much, both. Moving on to seven point two, from county councillor Maureen Powell to county councillor Jane Pratt, cabinet member for infrastructure and neighbourhood services. Maureen.
Thank you, chairman. Do you want to take it as read or would you like me to read it out?
I can take it as read, if you're happy with that.
If everybody's had a chance to read it, yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councillor Pratt.
Thank you very much, chairman. And can I thank councillor Powell for her question? And I am pleased to be able to report that the A465 is now fully open with no more planned road closures. Our officers have also been working closely with Costaine and Welsh Government to address the issues caused by the increased traffic using the surrounding lanes, especially during road closures, which has had a severe impact on the infrastructure that will now need to be repaired. I am also in communication with Mr William Watt, the Welsh Government project manager regarding the compensation claims to local businesses that have been affected by these works over the past seven years. And I am currently waiting for a reply from Mr Watt as businesses have reported getting no response when they have tried to start the process of making a claim. So I do hope that Welsh Government will act with a sense of urgency to compensate these local businesses that have suffered so much during the past seven years. And thank you very much for your question, councillor Powell.
Thank you very much. Councillor Powell, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, please. I'd like to, before too long, as time goes on, to have an update to see that Mammashia County Council are not left funding the costs and that the Welsh Government fulfills its obligations. Because so often, these things sort of drift away and somebody has to pick up the bill. And I don't want to see that being Mammashia County Council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I come back, chairman? Thank you. Yes, you raise a very valid point there, councillor Powell. And can I really assure everybody that officers and me as cabinet member will really be holding Welsh Government to account on those points that you've raised? And I would be very happy to come back to update council at a later date because Costaine and Welsh Government are going to be in the area for at least the next five years. You know, it's going to take a long time to put all these things right. Thank you very much indeed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Pratt, thank you very much for your responses. Moving on to seven point three, from county councillor Laura Jones to county councillor Jane Pratt, cabinet member for infrastructure and neighbourhood services. Councillor Laura Jones.
Thank you, Chair. Would the cabinet member please provide an update on the rollout of 20 mile an hour zones across Mammashia, including in Wysham?
Councillor Pratt.
Can I thank councillor Jones for her question? And the Welsh Government pilot projects in Aberguvenny and Sevenside are being prioritised with consultation for the traffic order scheduled to commence on the 22nd of December and running for 28 days. And the consultation period has been extended to account for the Christmas break. Provided there are no objections raised that cannot be resolved, the 20 mile an hour zones will be implemented in February. And we're very grateful for the support received from the Welsh Government and Transport for Wales officers. The other 20 mile an hour zones agreed for this financial year are in Deverdon, Mathan, Mammoth, including Wysham, Mindbach, Shire Newton and two parts of Chepstow, Mountain Road in the town centre. The 21 day consultation for the traffic order for these will commence in early February. And provided there are no objections raised that cannot be resolved, the 20 mile an hour zones will be implemented in March. And we're also proposing to make the Raglan and Tinton trial 20 mile an hour zones permanent, a move which has been supported by the respective community councils and the ward members. I hope that answers your question, councillor Jones. And can I thank you very much for bringing it?
Thank you very much. Councillor Jones, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I'd just like to say thank you for that update, councillor Pratt. Speeding and safety of children and residents has been a longstanding concern in Wysham. So I'd like to see some more work done there, if possible, please. And that we're regularly updated on the 20 mile an hour zones, which will have a massive impact across Mammashia. And may I just take this opportunity to thank you, Jane, for all that you've done this year? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor MS Laura Jones, thank you very much for your questions. And councillor Jane Pratt, thank you very much for your responses. Thank you all. So members, that concludes the members' questions for this meeting. The only other business is to confirm the minutes of the meeting held on the 4th of November 2021. Do any members have any questions on those minutes? If not, I'm happy to sign them after the meeting. Moving on to general item number nine, which is the next meeting, which is scheduled presently for the Thursday, the 27th of January 2022. Obviously, we will keep everyone abreast of the possibility of hybrid meetings or remote meetings as we move forward in time. Other than that, members, all it is left for me to do is to thank you all for attending the meeting today. And I wish you all a very, very pleasant and happy and safe Christmas to you and your families. And I wish you well into the new year and we look forward to you then. Thank you very much all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Happy Christmas.
Happy Christmas.